All right, we'll go ahead and get started with the Monday, May 16, Raymore City Council Work Session. We have two items on the agenda tonight. Item A is the City Hall entrance. Mr. Fairborn?
Thank you, sir. As my memo to you all states, on the front entrance, at a recent meeting, as you all are aware, we came to you and had some suggestions for the front entrance and cleaning up the front entrance. They basically took three parts. First was landscaping at the front entrance, second was lighting at the front entrance, and the walkway out in front, and the third one was actually repair to the front entrance associated with the rust on the wall and deterioration of some structural deterioration, which the council gave us direction to put in next year's CIP. Then you also gave us direction to come back to you all with a plan based on what you'd given us input on and precise pricing that was associated with that plan. So we come to you tonight with a lighting plan that you see on there, and I'm going to let Mike just very briefly describe the lighting plan associated with what's before you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fairborn. Mr. Mayor Protam, councilman, what we're proposing is to place some decorative bollards around the flagpole area along with a couple of bollards, and the exact location will be determined based on the photometrics across the way on the north side of the parking lot to better light that walkway that connects the two parking areas. Right now, the area is, well, it is a little dark immediately on the north side. It's also a little dark further north because we had one of our light poles fall over, and that is being shipped from California. It's a warranty repair. It was one of them that was recently replaced, and hopefully that'll be replaced in the next couple of weeks here. So that'll take care of some of the lighting on the sidewalk that's further north, but it's just the typical kind of decorative bollard. They're three or a little bit over feet tall and have light, and they are directional so that what the lights that are around the circle will be directed onto the concrete. There'll be very little spill behind there, and then we'll be looking at the lighting patterns for what'll work best on the northern bollards.
The goal on the northern bollards is to actually not only light a portion of the walkway, but right on either side there, if you're out there after dark, there's a dark patch there, and then at a future date, we would be coming back to the council because in reviewing all of this, we noticed that the two outside areas right around the entrance egress points is also pretty dark at night. Not pretty dark, it's dark. Those are going to take more than likely an increase in the number of overhead lights like the one that blew over, so kind of a different program, but this is to take care of those pedestrian areas that are necessarily dark, the front circle and the walkway, and to bleed a little out into that front area of the parking lot. Any questions on the lighting plan?
Not so much a question, but a comment. I'm glad you said that. That was exactly what I was going to bring up, were those two sidewalks that go out towards those very front parking spots, because I always park out here on the west, and it is very dark right there. So the other way is even, I think even more so because of the flagpole tower that is there, so I'm glad to see the staff is working on a solution for that.
Councilman Holman?
I'm assuming they're electric, but are they electric or solar powered?
They're standard electric.
Thanks.
Councilmember Hubach?
I just wanted to say that I was in favor of it. I noticed, I noticed that when I try to go down, the shadows sometimes are harder than to get past than anything else because you can't tell your depth on that, and you don't know whether you're straight going down some sidewalk or whether you're just walking along there. So anything that you can do to improve it, I know that would be a big help.
Councilman Barber?
Thank you. Has there been any thought of having directional lighting attached to the City Hall and actually aiming it towards those areas? Is that, would that be more efficient to do it, not to run all the time, but, you know, say when we're having evening meetings or there's an activity going on here, that you'd have lights that actually would light up more than just a localized area, would almost light the whole parking lot up?
We can certainly look at that. I mean, most of the parking lot is, after this, everything will have pretty sufficient lighting except for the two entrance spots, which a portion of that is going to, and the reason we're looking at that from a higher standpoint is to get a broader coverage. I think from a, just from a driver, this is Jim Fairborn speaking, take off the city manager's hat, just from a driving standpoint, having a lower light shining into my eyes as I'm trying to negotiate a parking lot, or you'd prefer that those be up a little bit higher above your head rather than shining into your windshield, I'd think.
Councilman Kellah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. The two that are out in the parking area, further out than the circle, what I'm curious about is how close, I assume those are going to be closer to that sidewalk space, and then secondly, were those going to be the same type of bollards that go around the circle? What I'm worried about is if we have problems with people that enter and exit their cars and bump into it or being in the way, or even possibly running into them like they do down at the bollards down at the Walmart, you know, that would be a concern of mine. But I want to ask if we've got that, if we've noticed that problem, you know, I don't know.
We always have problems with people running up on the grass, especially with the crazy configuration of these parking spaces, but these are actually pedestrian lights for the sidewalks, so they would be closer to the sidewalk rather than out in the front.
Okay, any other questions?
Just a comment, at the price given with the package and what we'll get for this, I think it'd be, I think we need to do it either way, but I think it's a great precursor to the building of the community center behind. It ties in certainly with what the citizens said at the community conversations. I'd like to see us go ahead and make a budget amendment for this year and get this done as soon as possible.
That was going to be my final question, sir.
Mr. Mayor Protam, I agree with councilmember Holman. The only final last question that I would have or concern is that, I would ask if these are aesthetically compatible with the lighting that we have around municipal circle, or has that been taken into consideration? I don't want this to be, I know Jim very well to know that, you know, but I want this here to be said, that, you know, is it coordinating compatible? I don't suspect that it's absolutely a 100% dead-on match, but is it coordinating compatible to where it'll be aesthetically pleasing?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Hubach, did you want to say something?
I'm thinking about what I've been heard, maybe a little bit later.
If it's okay, I'd move forward and then have Steve present on the landscaping associated with the package. It's a council.
Yes, let's go ahead.
He worked really hard on it, so I hate to ice him out.
Fair enough.
And he loves presenting.
Councilmember Hubach, if you do come up with a question, we can go back and revisit.
Well, I guess I'm going to say, are there more? What about downstairs? I know at one time when we had it as a community room, it was hard to see to get in and out. The hardest part of it is you cannot tell if there's a difference in elevations, and that's the one thing that I'm wondering if this will all take care of it, because I know for myself, when I'm coming and the light's back behind me, I can't always tell whether I'm getting ready for a flat surface or whether I'm supposed to go down, or if I'm stepping on a step, how, you know, what the elevation is on that step. And I don't know whether the rest of you have that as a problem or not, but those of us that are older do have because we kind of lose our ability for perspective on some of that.
Councilman Holman?
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Hubach, I agree with your comments completely. I think this is the first phase. We take this step and we see if we like it. You'll get a chance to walk out there, and these, this is probably not a real time, I mean, it's not going to take us a long time to do this, am I right, Mike?
Most of it would be the lead time on the materials, and we, since we haven't really selected a specific manufacturer yet, we don't know what that is, but that's really the biggest challenge is what the lead time is on delivery of the equipment.
I'd say once we got it and put it in, it wouldn't take that long, but I think once we got it, we decided we like it. I think that this program is ripe for expansion around the rest of City Hall on the backside and other parts of municipal circle, perhaps down to the community center. We already anticipate larger gatherings at the community center, people parking up here and walking down, or even maybe the city providing some transportation. So I think you're right on track. I agree with that. I say we start with this, see what we, see if we like it and if it's what we want, and then expand it.
Was, did that fully address your question? All right, perfect.
We'll see how it works out.
Fair enough. Let's go ahead and move on.
We like to think we're a constant work in progress, so. Mr. Rulo, speaking of works in progress.
Thank you, Mr. Fairborn, council, especially for that one. Basically, a recap from the April 4th Work Session. What staff came out after the discussion was four main points. We wanted to have the concrete benches be a focal point. Councilmember Stevens definitely wanted to have boxwoods as part of the species of shrubs to be planted out there. Combination of perennials and annuals, and then I think everybody agreed on switching out all of our annual beds three times a year per season. If you can see the great picture that has been given to you, we've gone with three different species, or three different varieties of boxwoods, which will kind of break up. There won't be such an overabundance of one type. You have the flagpole with one type, you have the border of both sides with one type, and then your two benches are surrounded by the taller cone-shaped, more focal, you're going to see them as soon as you get out of your car, type shrubs. And then as we moved up into the raised beds, you kind of go, it's not as formal, but it's still a formal deal, but a formal planting, and then kind of goes on up into the doorway, which you can see the new flower pots that have been planted out there. It's also suggested that we get two more concrete benches to place out there for citizens or staff members to take breaks out and read out in the sun. That's it, unless you want me to go through my long, drawn-out presentation, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Kellah?
I would love to have that long, drawn-out presentation.
Here we go.
You can email it to me. Seriously, I just had a discussion, and boxwoods, I agree with them, but I have to ask this question. I just had this discussion over the weekend, talking about shrubbery around my house and the person's house that I was speaking with, and this person said that they took them out, and I'm going to ask this, okay, just because this ties right into there. They told me that they took those out from in front of their house because of the horrendous, ungodly scent that they got, they gave off, and I will not even describe what he said it smelled like, but I want to ask because you know more about older horticultural implants than I do. Are boxwoods, do they give off odor at certain times, and would they be offensive to the point where somebody wouldn't want to be sitting around them at any certain time in the year?
I don't think that the odor is going to be that strong. All of them do not put out an odor. With the other flowers, annuals, perennials that'll be around there, I mean, the beds are going to be lined with hyacinth, which gives you a warming fragrance early spring, but to answer your question, no, I don't think it's going, there's going to be an overbearing, bad smell.
Councilman Kellah, I actually planted over a dozen in front of my house two years ago, and other than just getting a plant, basic smell, there's no unique odors that derive from a standard boxwood.
And I have experienced the same thing to myself, and I was just hoping I wasn't, you know, just so lucky to get one that doesn't have an offensive smell to it, but I'd never heard that before, so, but I had to ask because of the area that it's at, so anyway, I appreciate the opportunity.
Councilmember Hubach?
My next door neighbor has a lot of them, and she's constantly having to prune. I mean, there's a lot of work goes into pruning and pruning and pruning, and they get out of, get too big too soon, and they've got to the place now, even though she does it every year, they have to place now where you have to almost walk sideways because they grow so fast, I think. And at one time, I had heard that this was not a good area for boxwoods, so I don't know, but I just know what I can see from my neighbor, and it is just, it gets overgrown too fast, too quick, and unless we've got staff here that's prepared to do a lot of pruning, I would suggest something that wasn't quite as fast-growing and as tall, because on hers, they're about three feet tall, and that's a pretty good size.
I have some that have spanned 15 feet. That was a previous, the previous homeowner, though. A lot of that has to do with keeping them separated. A lot of people make the mistake of putting them too close together, but actually, Mr. Rulo, you're much farther ahead of me than on all this, so I'll let you answer the question.
Well, we've got to remember that this is going to be an English-style garden out front. These will be pruned on a regular basis, manicured, the high and tight, so yes, we will take care of them. They won't get out of control. It will be, there'll be some time put in out front of here. Boxwoods grow great around here.
And last, you may remember at the original presentation, the council did ask for that well-manicured, English-style look to this, and we recognized right away, number one, that there needed to be more, the reason we brought it to the council is because both the council and staff recognized there needed to be more work done here, so, and Steve's staff is great about being up here, making sure that things are looking as tight as they can. This'll just be part of that. They recognize it.
Okay, Councilman Kellah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam, and I agree. I've seen them at work. I've seen their work after they've done it, and I'm very impressed. What I am curious about, and not that it's going to make any difference, but I'm just curious, have you given any consideration as to how much more time it would, it might take as far as a person to take care of those on the yearly basis? I, you know, I know kind of what it's going to entail, but as far as person hours, what do you think that would take throughout the year to keep that manicured and looking like what the expectations of this council is?
I can't say that I've put hours to it, but what I can say is with our, with the addition of our part-time horticulturist that's been here for a couple of years, when she comes in here, she has a rotation that she goes around to each of the beds, so she's hitting all the beds every week. It takes a little bit to get caught up with early spring, but once she gets caught up, she's going through when she needs help early spring, then I throw another guy in, another employee to come up, help her. You know, you might be adding another hour or two, maybe, maybe a little bit more up front. You know, we don't do it with the little hand clippers. I mean, we definitely have good hedge trimmers and, and then, so I'd say a couple, two, three.
Councilmember Hubach?
Yes, I was wondering, what about insects and bees? Are they attracted to things like that? We don't want to have anything where we have to worry about a lot of bumblebees or regular bees as we go by. Do you know anything about that, or?
They are not attracted to boxwoods by, I mean, it's, they're usually going towards the fragrance, and the hyacinths are down before the bees come out and all that stuff, so, yeah.
Councilmember Holman?
I have to address the blue and gray KUMU argument. You've shown your disdain for ash trees. We've had this conversation a number of times. Now you're eliminating maples. You're starting to get personal. It's the only thing I have in my yard, and where, pray tell, is the bald cypress? Because I know it's your favorite. I don't see it on the landscape land.
The maple trees that are being taken out, they're bad. They need to be taken out. They're ugly. The boxwood, these two particular ones are very ugly. They need to be taken out, replaced with boxwoods. Bald cypress would be great, I just think it's the wrong place.
Councilmember Holman, I actually have to kind of censor you here a little bit. Getting a little personal here. We have to separate the two of you.
The, I would actually stand behind and maybe one of the root causes of the two maples having to come out, if you take a look at the one maple, it is right next to the drive box, and speaking of people driving up on the grass, but it has no header, and every year, it looks like it's the last year for that thing. It's, and the one on this side isn't much better, so the intention would be, and you can actually see it in the diagram, that we're going to replace them with black gums, but we're moving them closer to the center of the lawn. We're also going to be taking out the two ash trees, only the two ash trees currently that are located in the medians, which, if you look at them, they're actually starting to curl over. I don't know if they're trying to find water or what the deal is, but they're curling over back to the ground. Those two would come out and also be replaced in the center of the median with a black gum as well.
Okay. For clarification's sake, so the landscaping we're talking about here is the $4,000 included in the 22 that's mentioned in the memorandum.
That is correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
I've got one, Mr. Mayor Protam. I'm kind of asking Steve on the side here, do we plan on planting any things that would draw hummingbirds and butterflies and such like that, since the subjects come up about bees and that?
I don't plan on planting any pollinator gardens up here around City Hall. We do have a couple of them planted around the city and are actually bringing in, through bridging the gap, we received a, they're very small grants, but there's going to be four, four or five more planted, they're five by tens, they're coming in June throughout the city.
If you can give me some more information, I'd be really interested. Thank you.
Councilman?
I don't know whether this is the appropriate time for it or not, but we've got dead trees on people's properties. Is there anything we can do to get rid of those? Like out there on Jay Highway, we've got one that's got about like 10, 15 acres, and there must be 20 dead trees there, and it looks bad. Not only does it look bad, but it means then that the disease that killed them can spread to other things, and so I'm concerned about that also. When I was out looking around, over the city the past weekend, I noticed that there's a lot of places where there's dead trees in homeowners' association places, and I just wondered, is there anything that we can do when there's downed trees and there's stumps and there's big limbs and everything like that just left in there? It's one thing to have a nice-looking area, but something else to have trees that are dead and you just leave them alone because you say, well, that's in the homeowners', and that's up to them to take care of, the homeowners' association, and so they permit those to be kept, and it seems to me like that is, makes the town look unkempt.
I'm not going to ask for Mr. Zer to comment on this, but I'm pretty confident I would get something along the lines of, since that is a private property issue that is outside of our scope and our authority, I can only imagine that, yes, if a home association wishes to contact our Parks Department, they may be willing to offer suggestions or, you know, place people they can talk to or contact the state, but I'm really hesitant to even entertain a discussion on a personal property issue. If a homeowner wants to let a tree be dead, I can't imagine all the benefits of that, but I, again, I don't want to explore that part of the discussion tonight. Councilman Kellah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. A thing that I'll chime in on there, and I agree with you and I appreciate your comments, is that where I believe that we as the City Council and the city would have the right purview or avenue to do something is if it became an issue of health and safety of the community at large, like if there was a tree hanging over a sidewalk or a street or right-of-way, something in that order, but I agree with you, and I'll leave my comments at that. Thank you.
As to the issue at hand with the modifications of the entrance, Mr. Fairborn, do you have enough to move forward on this?
We have our direction, we'll be bringing the necessary budget amendments and contracts to the council for your approval, sir.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to item B, city recognition medallion. I'm going to, Mr. Fairborn, if you would take over, but I see Mr. Holman's name mentioned.
That is correct, sir, and with that, I will turn the introduction of this item over to the councilman.
Well, thank you, sir. This idea came to me shortly after I came on to the council. I found it a little bit disturbing that the only way we had, it's not uncommon for cities our size in particular, the only way we had to recognize someone, and still do, is via a resolution or proclamation, and the end result, if you will, is a piece of paper. So imagine a scenario where, since I've been picking on Steve Rulo, I'll make him the hero in this story, Steve were to go out tonight and he's driving home through the city, and he sees a car on fire with a small child inside, and he's able to save that child from the fire. A recognition to him is the same that we give to the Girl Scouts during Girl Scout Week, both honorable and commendable situations, but miles apart in magnitude. City medals, if you will, are not unheard of. Many of the larger cities have these for events of larger magnitude, and I would like for us to consider doing something like this and having something available that the council itself could award. That's another thing to consider, is that right now, by resolution or proclamation, the mayor still has to agree to that, even if the council tells him that they would like this done, the mayor still agrees to this. So I would like for us to have some version of recognition for different types of events that the council could award. As we go through, I've got maybe a little bit more I could add on and give you some of the examples, but I think Mr. Fairborn's got some pretty good background for us.
And what we're passing around now, courtesy of the Kansas City, Missouri Police Department and Chief Zimmerman, are some of the awards that they offer, and then courtesy of Chief Zimmerman's husband, who, either that or she stole it without telling him, is a really good example of what the Royals, the Royals' ALCS championship rings came in these types of boxes, and like you open the box and it lights up, and the World Series rings are also in a similar type wooden case, and didn't really want to get hung up on design of it. That would come later, or the display box, but kind of wanted to show you some of the things that are available out there. The key tonight, our key questions, hang on just one second, actually begin with, is the council interested in some sort of recognition medallion of this sort? And then if you are, we have some other questions that we'd kind of like for you all to flesh out before we would come back with final recommendations to you all on how to proceed. And most of them, most of our questions are going to be, if you do want to do this, what do you see as the administrative structure associated with it? Because that can be as complex or as simple as you want.
Questions? Councilmember Kellah?
Not so much a question, but to help the discussion transpire and go on. Jay and I had talked about this a couple of times. I've asked him a couple of times since he's come on council, and it's one of the first things he said to me that, you know, he was looking at, so I appreciate it begun, coming forth finally. And I agree with what he said. When he first discussed this with me, the idea that came to my mind is what happens in many of the bigger cities when a, we, I've seen it many times, I'm going to assume we have seen it many times, a citizen comes upon a situation and they go above and beyond what the call of their duty is, you know, whatever that is, you know, whether it be somebody running into a house to save somebody that's in there in trouble in a fire, or, you know, whatever, somebody, getting somebody out of a car that's in flooded waters. I've seen many different instances. Where I've seen that go further is that the city council acknowledged that, engaged a, one of these, exactly, whether it be a certificate of valor, a certificate of distinguished service, or whatever we decide to call it, whatever the municipality calls it. It isn't a proclamation from the mayor. It isn't, you know, proclaiming this day is for this person and that, you know, not that that's a bad idea, but this is something different. This comes from, that, what I'm... This comes from, that, what I'm thinking of comes from the council. It doesn't come from the mayor. Now, where I see a conflict is, maybe a conflict is, does our charter allow it? Will there need to be some changes in that? You know, because I don't know if our charter allows the council to recognize, you know, and I'm not trying to be a devil's advocate here, but it, it's a question that I, I think really needs to be explained or, or answered first and foremost. And, you know, if, if we don't have that, I would support, you know, advocating the change for that to happen. So, but I, I absolutely love this idea. I mean, this is a great way for us to honor citizens that go far beyond what, you know, people, what we would think a person would do, you know.
Okay. Before any other council members go, I know Chief Zimmerman has joined us. Did you have something to add?
I, I mainly asked her when, when and if we get to process discussions. The Kansas City, Missouri Police Department is already doing this on a lot of different levels. So I thought if we had any questions or she, she might be able to give us a good outline.
And I, I did bring a copy of the KCPD policy, which applies to citizens and members. The KCPD policy which applies to, to both citizens and members of the police department. Obviously, this would be the city as a whole and not just the police department. For those acts, as Mr. Fearborn said, that are much further above and beyond, and I think Councilman Holman said, you know, than just, you know, the regular certificate of commendation and, and things like that. So these, these are much higher acts, both for citizens and employees alike.
Councilmember Hubak?
Is this kinda the thing, like somebody saves somebody else's life and we want to, to recognize them? Cause my concern was, I didn't have any strong feelings one way or the other. But my concern was, we don't wanna trivialize it. We wanna make sure that the criteria is high enough so that it is meaningful when we give it out. And it's just not something that we give out maybe more than once or twice a year. And maybe, and we don't have to give it out just because we didn't give anything out this year. I don't want to make it so that it's meaningless.
Okay. Councilmember Holman?
Thank you, sir. And I think Councilmember Hubak brings up a, a very good point. And to that end, I would recommend probably not one, but a series of three, three medallions. Perhaps in a little bit more generic structure than you would see in the military or police force. But one that would be our highest honor, that you would have to, would require exceptional merit or valor and would be awarded very infrequently, if you will, all the way down to the third tier, which might be something like a meritorious achievement or lifetime achievement medal. For example, the lower tier medal might be someone like the gentleman that we recognized by proclamation or resolution, closing in on 100 years old, still alive, which was one of the requirements for the French Legion of Merit, had seen time during, in France during World War II, a, a lower level of the medal. And, and I think we could set up the tier system that would recognize the different levels of achievement, but reserving the very highest honor. Much if you will like, the United States Congress awards the Medal of Honor. They don't give those out very frequently. And to that end, I would also recommend that we make these medallions a council-awarded medallion by the aid of us, without the mayor voting on it, but just like the congressional, or the Medal of Honor, rather, awarded by us, presented by the mayor. That's how it's done. Congress awards the honors presented by the President of the United States, for the very top level, if you will.
Councilmember Kellogg?
And that's kinda what I was gonna say, is that it be tiered and with very, I don't wanna say strict, but defined guidelines as to what those tiers are that you, that, that a person or an organization needs to achieve this litmus test, this standard to have proven that, that they're worthy of, of that honor. The, the thing that came to my mind is Mrs. Hubak was, was, was talking and she's got some very good points, very valid points. The Marines that thwarted the terrorist attack overseas, you know. That, that seems kinda hypothetical, but it's really not, you know. I mean, there's, there's instances that, that have happened here in Raymore that I think, you know, I can easily think of that somebody has saved somebody's life and, and it, it just, you know, i- it, it happens. But we didn't have, you know, and it's unfortunate. We didn't have the, a mechanism or a recognition policy in place that would have allowed us back then to do that, you know. So I'd...
Well, the only, I, I'd like to go ahead and chime in on this one as a council member. I, I would say I am very supportive of it, but in being that supportive of it, I actually wanna be very critical. And that is to defend, to make sure that we maintain a certain objectivity and quality here. So I'm interested to see the policies. Because, I mean, unfortunately, what we intend today could mutate over time. And my fear is, and, and I've belonged, and I think we all have, organizations that try to honor kind of the Person of the Year or whatever. And then what it ends up being is, it's not Person. Because they don't have established criteria, it ends up being the committee's buddy or, you know, they keep it among their friends. It stops, it really gets watered down and politicized. And so, you know, where, I know we're not trying to do a Raymore Citizen of the Year, kinda like an honorary Oscar feel, but, so I, I'd be interested. So I guess I'd be defensive to see the criteria, not to say yes or no, but to say, when we do this, let's, let's make this to where it really is actually difficult to attain. Therefore, it's meaningful. And then because it's not given out very much, you know, we do have some spaces here where we've recognized history or art in our little display cases. But, you know, I'm proud of the little, the little plaque that I got from the Missouri Municipal League. I'd like to see us put a display up to recognize this person that way. And it stays up for a little while because unfortunately, I feel kinda bad and maybe I'm talking out of, out of school here, but we give the proclamations on Monday night. And yes, there might be some different levels there we wish we could do more. But I hate when you give something to someone and then the next day it's just gone. There's no, there's no residual. And especially because we, if you don't watch on that Monday night meeting, you kinda lose out on really seeing it. It'd be nice if we could do something and then there's a proper city display. That way people can really take it in and, and they can enjoy it, we can enjoy it. So I'm concerned, I wanna see a good criteria. Yes, Councilmember Holman?
Thank you, sir. And I couldn't agree with you more. One thing to remember, that if, if we adopt something like this, we would recognize person. I'll use Mr. Rulo since I've been picking on him. But there's the, the act of, of honoring whatever it is that person did that was of that magnitude. But the overarching theme and the, the thing that you're doing here is we are honoring a memory that all dovetails with, right in with what you're saying. Create a, a permanent display or memorial because we are doing exactly what Ronald Reagan did. Well, not only are we giving Mr. Rulo the medal, we're making all 20,000 people feel good about where they live and what we do. We're honoring that memory and we remember that memory for as long as we can. We continue to promote that. It's, it's a part of esprit de corps. It's, it's a higher level than the challenge coin, but in the same vein.
Yes, Chief Zimmerman?
And, and that's part of the reason, sir, for this. Because obviously, you know, the, the medallion, the box or whatever you choose is, is the symbol of that then goes to the individual. But this, I mean, and, and there's certainly nothing wrong with the proclamation, but you know, this is, you know, much more detailed and, and would go on display in honor of that person for the award that they received.
Mr. Zer, you've joined us. You're the charter, charter custodian.
Simply to chime in with Councilmember Kellogg's comments. You've had broad powers as a council. And in fact, the limitations you've got are very few. You have liberally construed with regard to the powers under Article Two of your Raymore Charter. I know that in, even in my hometown, we have provisions for medals to be provided out, like similar to what the chief is talking about that we have done in the past. So I would not view that as a limitation for you at this particular time. I've only made note, the same things that have been brought up here and I, I commend Mayor Protem Morehead for making comment to it. The criteria for issuance, cause you do have a prospect of degradation over a period of time would be my only concern, so.
Councilmember Holman?
Not only do we need to make the criteria very specific and difficult to obtain, but then we have to consider a very qualified nomination process as well.
Councilmember Burke?
I started thinking as we were talking about this, maybe along with the award, that we could also purchase a memorial brick for them out at TB Hannah with, and possibly with an engraving of the actual medal. So that would be a permanent display for the city citizens as well.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and make a suggestion again as a council member and, and say, we've got a couple of variables at play. First of all, we're a slightly short-staffed council member wise and, and mayor tonight. Plus, you know, I, I think we've kind of gotten the first taste of this idea and, and, and the comments have been all relatively supportive. But with the caveat that we would like to see some developed policies. So I would go ahead and suggest to the council, why don't we move this to a later work session and allow staff to develop those policies? Come back to the full council and mayor so we can kind of have, have that second layer of discussion with more information. Councilmember Kellogg?
I would completely agree with that and support it fully. I, my only question would be is to staff, do you have enough information to, to go forward and, and begin this? Do you need something more from us? That, that was kinda my purpose of throwing the conversation out there to my colleagues down to my left. So is that way that that transpires?
The, 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 the main question staff had is, do we proceed with developing something for you all? Or do you not want this at all? But what I, what I have heard is a tiered system, which means more than one, possibly three. We have heard other recognition items. We need to develop the policies that would be associated or the criteria, the SOP that would be gone through, policies and SOP that would be undertaken by the council in order to make this award. What, some, some items, maybe two questions, sir. Just as we're proceeding through to get to that point. Would the, I recognize the entire council, the, the suggestion made tonight is that the entire council makes the award. Would, would you all just see, and I know that you're not all here, would you all see the entire council being the committee that made the recommendation to themselves? Or would you see an annual subcommittee? Would you see this being done annually and submitted na, the committee looks at submitted names, possibly makes no award that year because there's nothing? But do, do you see it initially starting at a subcommittee of the council, looking at suggested nominations and then bringing those forward to the entire council for review? Or do you see it being, council meets in a work session and debates each of the submittals all at once? That would impact as we go through and try to set the policy that we would be recommending to you all for...
Councilmember Kellogg?
Thank you. And those are very good questions. And that's why I think we really need another, further, more in detail discussion on this. You know, cause here's, this is something, when, when, when we, I, I would think that when we honor valor or distinguished service, that, that never happens on a scheduled basis. It's a fluid thing, you know, we never know. But I also wouldn't wanna see where we'd have to wait quarterly or semi-annually or bi-annual, whatever the, the, the time limits would, might be to, to go back and, and recognize that. I, I think it's, you know, that there are times that, that come up in, in, in everybody's lives that, you know, that it, the appropriate time to act is, is now. I, I would, I would like to see it to where we would have that ability, you know. One instance that, that comes to mind, and, you know, and I'll, I'll give this for, for food for thought. Sir, see, the Secret Santa that we had that passed away here a few years ago. Nobody knew who that was until he was diagnosed that he was terminal, you know. And that was the appropriate time. And, you know, it, it's those kind of instances that I would like to, to be able to, if we're able to do this, that we'd be able to react to in a timely manner, you know. Not just that instance, but a, a broad spectrum. So I appreciate the questions.
Councilmember Holman?
No, I, I think you bring up a valid point, Kevin. I like Mr. Fearborn's idea of a, a subcommittee or an external committee of staff or someone reporting to us, as much how it's done with Congress and the Medal of Honor, an investigatory committee, if you will. Findings presented to Congress and they vote on it. But also a provision or a conduit, if you will, to fast-track one of those items, should it be, need to be done, which would simply be just a provision within the protocol itself.
And Mr. Holman brings up a good point. You know, I, I, I wouldn't even think that it would have to be a council subcommittee. I mean, I'd think a, a, a no-brainer, for the lack of the word that I'm looking for, would be, you know, a, a committee of staff, particularly somebody from, you know, the police department, you know, or a community develop, or a community relations person that would be out in the community, knowing what's going on, you know, and the different acts of, that, that have happened in the city that, you know, would naturally be, that the police would know about. Staff would, I would think would be imperative onto a committee for this type of thing.
I'm, Councilmember Hubak?
I was just thinking, why don't we find out what like the Congressional Medal of Honor and some of these other things, the criteria they're used so that we can see what people are considered as outstanding. And then we can maybe draw from that and come up with something that's just for Raymore. Maybe we could, if we're gonna give this to the citizens of Raymore, maybe we ought to have a little input from them as to what they would like to see.
Well, and, and I'll chime in. I, I kind of agree actually with all of you. But again, and I say this sounding like a concern, but because I would like to look at citizen input. I don't think this needs to be limited to just a, a council. But I'm hesitant to wanna develop a subcommittee right out of the gate in the sense that coming to the next work session is when we should discuss structure. And I think since we really have no policy in place, I, I don't think you, you know, you, you don't pick the realtor before you even decide to build the house. And so let's, I would really encourage that. And, and I'm really kind of opposed to setting up an annual system, primarily because then you almost kind of compel the group. They feel a pressure to have to nominate somebody. I mean, I'm a huge baseball fan. The baseball writers or associations who picks the baseball Hall of Fame. And every once in a while, it doesn't happen often, they don't select somebody and they get death threats. And I mean, they're, you know, it's, it's almost sacrilegious. But it's the idea that, you know, then the pressure is, oh, are they, are they voting for somebody because they feel they have to? And which is again, the very concern we're trying to avoid. So I'd like to see what the criteria is. And I think the establishment of the criteria will dictate the timeliness of the application of the criteria, especially if we're looking at somebody who does an, a particular act. Because then again, you have to kinda wait till the act occurs. So you can't say, you know, you can't look at somebody and say, hey, you got three weeks left to go save somebody. You know, we, we, we wanna, so I, I guess, Mr. Fearborn and Councilmember Kellogg, I'll give you a second here. I'm gonna finish my statement as saying, I, I wouldn't like to answer that question at this time. But Councilmember Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, you know, and thank you, Chief Zimmerman, for being here and with the policy. I think a good place to start right now, and I've already heard you say it tonight, is to see the policy. I, I, I would like to see what, what Chief Zimmerman has, if she can get that to us, you know. So that would be, you know, at this point, at least a starting point. Not saying the starting point, but there's a policy that one of our municipalities is already using. Let's, let's review it before we, we discuss this any further, you know, so.
And, and just, and we'll get that out to you in digital form tomorrow. The can, the, the only caveat I would give with that one is it's, it's paramilitary related, as are these medals. And I'm hearing from the council that you would, this would also be a, citizens would be eligible for this. So you don't end up with, you, you know, we'll, we'll have to, internally, we'll have to make those adjustments when we're writing the policy. The, maybe just one last question as we...
The, maybe just one last question, as we, sorry, sir. I see you volunteering for some things, chief, I'm very sorry.
Uh-oh.
The, would the council see this being limited to Raymore citizens? And the two examples I would bring up, the Star Award from the City of Chicago, and the Bronze Medallion, which is the highest-vanillion award in New York City, are rarely given to citizens within the city. They are given, the city recognizes someone, now, obviously, those are very large cities, so they can, but they recognize an act, and actually recognize it through the award. Examples would be Douglas MacArthur received the bronze award, or the bronze medallion in New York City, others like that, well, he's not a resident of the city, but he still received it, and just for council consideration, it doesn't have to be decided tonight, but things that you might want to be considering.
Sure. Councilman Kellogg?
Excellent, excellent comment and question. I didn't think of that. I would think that if the criteria is written broad enough, specific enough, and that would allow for somebody outside, you know, because when I think about this, I think about Raymore residents, or somebody doing something in Raymore for Raymore, or a Raymore citizen. That's what came to my mind at first, but as this discussion goes on, it gets really broad, doesn't it? You know, so, I mean, I would think that, you know, during the discussions, we might be able to maybe address that in the criteria, you know? I guess, I don't see, and maybe I'm off-base, maybe I'm off-base, Jim, but I don't see the importance or the relevance of us recognizing something somebody did in Greenbow, Alabama, you know? They did that, they moved to Raymore, and now, you know, now they're Hall of Fame, whatever, you know, I don't see that. I see this being something of valor distinction, and something that really is of distinguished honor of giving.
Mr. Burke?
I was gonna say, I prefer not to see this going to any elected officials, whether it be state, county, federal, local levels, unless it was something that they did as a citizen that happens to be, but I don't think it should be something like, this person, you know, at one point was on council, and then they went on to do things at a larger level for the state in general, and then we're gonna support them and say, hey, thanks. I just, I don't think that's what we're looking at here, if I could get input from Mr. Holman.
That was, to answer both Councilmember Kellogg's, sorry, I didn't mean to pass you over, buddy. Councilmember Kellogg's comments and yours, that was kind of the purpose of the tier system, having three or maybe even four different medals, and there is precedent within the military, for those of you MASH fans, you know my love of TV and movies. If you remember the very first episode where Colonel Potter arrived, and he proudly told radar, that's a good conduct medal, only an enlisted man can get one, which is true, so there, we could do a separate one for citizens, non-citizens, and an example might be, Kevin, imagine if General Norman Schwarzkopf was born and went to school here in Raymore, obviously moves away, and is a national hero, if you will, was back in town, and we wanted to honor him as a former citizen, we would want some conduit and some availability to do that, we wouldn't want to be, our own policies won't allow us to do that, so maybe that's a separate, like I said, that's why I recommended the tier system. Same thing with you, Joe, I could see the lower end being someone, Councilmember Hubach's great example, she's been on the council forever, she's given time, countless hours of time and energy to the city, was postmaster, involved in numerous organizations, the lower-level medallion, I think, would be an appropriate fitting, certainly not the top level, unless she saved the burning child from the car, or the car from the burning, the child from the burning car, I'll spit it out eventually, that was my intent.
But that's why I thought the water tower was for it. Okay, sorry, Councilman Barber?
I'm not going there.
Wow.
I was gonna comment on Councilman Kellogg's comment, I think it should be both ways, it could be a citizen of Raymore, but what if somebody was passing through town? Somebody that doesn't live here, but conducts business here, or has a business here, or something of that nature, so I could see, you know, the criteria open for that, and then back to your comment, somebody that does live here, but does something far, you know, out of Raymore, be able to recognize them. So I'd like to see the criteria set up, be if they met that top-tier level for something, or maybe even the lower tier, but I would think this would be more for the biggest one, that we'd have the ability to give that award out.
Yes?
I just want to say thank you all, I just wanted to get the idea out there and get support for it, so I've gone above and beyond what I wanted to accomplish tonight, the rest of it basically is housekeeping, there's a lot of it to be done, and we're gonna throw it on the shoulders of staff like we normally do, but I just wanted to see, and I think there's consensus, please correct me if I'm wrong, that there's general support for the idea.
Well, I do have to say, I've kind of drank the Kool-Aid on this, and to run alongside the reimagined Raymore, I'm now seeing a recognize Raymore component, so, Councilman Burke?
One last thing to clarify my position on elected officials, I think if somebody is retiring in their career as some type of elected official, that would be different, as opposed to someone who is actively seeking to stay in office, or to bring another office, I don't want to see any national or state politics taint this local initiative. That's my thought.
Councilman Kellogg?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, thank you, and I couldn't agree any further, or any more than I do, you know, we've discussed having a subcommittee, or this go be vetted through the council, you know, and I do like that process for exactly what you're talking about, because whenever we start, you know, recognizing politics with this, I believe it does it a disservice, it discredits, it dirties it up, and quite frankly, nobody, you know, that wants to be known as honorable, ever wants to be a politician, you know, but, so, I wouldn't want this, you know, for the very same reasons as you do, so.
Councilmember Hubach?
I've been thinking about it, I've come through, I've come through Raymore, and I saw somebody drowning, and I saved their life, and you all gave me a medallion. I don't live in Raymore, I'm in from New York, and the medallion doesn't mean a thing to me, but now, here I am, and I'm in Raymore, and I live in Raymore, and I've done a deed of something, it would mean something to me to get a medallion like that, but for an outsider, it would just be another, something to throw away. I think it should be limited to Raymore people. It would mean something to someone in Raymore, but it's not gonna mean anything to somebody in Alabama, or the Northwest, Northeast, or whatever it is.
Well, I don't want to challenge you one-on-one on this, but I will say, that would be an interesting discussion to have when we're going through the policies. Now, my instinct would lead me to believe that, yes, there is entirely possible that there's somebody that isn't that appreciative of the medal, and some may, I mean, I guess I would hate to turn somebody who does a good gesture that meets our criteria to just automatically slough them off, but again, wonderful fruit for a later discussion. For Mr. Zer, do you have something to add?
Real quickly, and I am really hesitant to interject myself in the discussion, because it's really not legal-oriented at the end of the day, but, you know, you keep going back to your National Congressional Medal of Honor, and that's the highest award that can be given for military service at the end of the day, there are highest levels for that as well, too, across the board, so you've got a citizen level, which for us, and the national level, is the Presidential Medal of Freedom. Police officers or peace officers would be Congressional Medal of Honor potentially, and then you've got employee levels even, that would have a presidential award for distinguished federal service, so you've got options there to categorize, rather than just have a high, low, middle-level type of thing go along with that.
Councilmember Kellogg?
I hope I can say this is my last comment, I really do, I don't want to keep us here any later than what we are. When I think about this, I want this out, you know, and it hasn't been said, but I'll say it, you know? When I think of this kind of a distinguished, or honor, or recognition, I think of heroism. I don't think of winning a reality TV show is heroism, you know, and that's the intent of my support for this tonight. Somebody out there, like the Marines that thwarted the terrorist act, that's heroism. Somebody pulling somebody out of a burning building, that's heroism. Somebody performing CPR on somebody at the grocery store, whether they're just driving through Raymore from Greenbow, Alabama, or right over here in Ward Three, you know, those people stepped up, they did an act of heroism, you know? We just don't know when the thing's gonna come about, so I've said my piece, and, but I want it to be known that the intent of my support is for real distinguished acts, not singing contest. We can leave that to the water tower.
Before I get to you, Councilman Holman, I will take privilege and step in and go, I would totally agree, giving a medal to somebody for winning something is rewarding them for being rewarded, that's not necessarily what I'm seeing as sacrifice, or commitment, or service, so, Councilman Holman?
Just to, final comment, one, again, back to, I think we've reached consensus, staff will begin to flesh us, help us flesh this out, and we'll get to where we want to go if we do various levels of awards, and, but the category idea that Mr. Zer brought up is very well-founded, and again, back to my example of the Medal of Honor, the Medal of Honor is different, depending, it looks slightly different, depending upon which branch of service you are in. There is a different medal for the Air Force, a different medal for, they're all very similar, but slightly different, a different medal for the Army, different medal for the Navy, Marine Corps, Coast Guard, and civilian award. On top of that, there is the Presidential Medal of Freedom, which is also offered somewhat in comparison to that as well, so the category idea certainly has its place and precedent within the federal government, so I think we, let staff flesh this out, we can come back and waste our time and chew on it some more in another work session. Thank you very much, I do greatly appreciate everyone's support on this, I, it sounds like everybody's at least somewhat in favor of it, thank you.
Mr. Feerborn, do you have enough information?
Absolutely, sir.
Okay, all right, on that note, we will go to item C, other.
We have no other tonight, sir.
We do not have other, Mr. Feerborn, do we have reason to go into executive session?
We have no reason to go into executive sessions.
At that point, then, I will therefore adjourn the work session, thank you.